Good evening. Welcome to the October 10th, 2016 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, please. Commissioner Chip Pinion will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Chip.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you so much for this day. We thank you for allowing us to come together tonight and to do the work of the county. Father, we pray that you would influence us with your wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, Lord, to make the best decisions here tonight. Father, we pray for all those that are recovering tonight from the hurricane damage down along the coast. Father, we can, as you pray for those families, pray for those people that are working, keep them safe, Father, during this time. Father, we continue to pray for all our military and those that serve for us, both here and abroad. We ask you to continue to be with them, their families, give them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding they need. Father, continue to guide us and direct us in all that we do. We give you thanks. In Jesus' name. Amen.
All in the roll, please, Gail.
Rhonda Allen. Jim Everwater. Lee Bogle. Will Jordan. Mike Kush. Craig Lynch. Chip Pinion. Charlotte P. Mike Vought. Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Have a form.
Thank you, Gail. No minutes to approve tonight. And under item five, we have two items that have been withdrawn. Item number 6A1, Charles Mullins, 16-8014, and 6A4, Joanie Cook, 16-8017. We have a late submittal for a couple of final plats that need to be reapproved. And I'd like for, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules so we can hear those. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules to hear item number 15-2070 and 15-2078. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye. Motion carries. Thank you. And these are our final plats. And it will also be under new business A. Item number, as I said, is 15-2070, Popular Cove subdivision, section three. This is a reapproval of seven lots on 5.57 acres, zoned RM, located off West Sagefield Drive. Harmony Homes of Tennessee is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. And good evening, Commissioners. As you stated, this is for the Popular Cove subdivision. Both of these final plats that we'll be considering tonight have been approved by the Planning Commission previously. This particular plat was recorded, I'm sorry, was approved back in September of last year. The plat itself is in good order. The issue that it's running into is they're looking to record it, but final plat approvals under our current regulations are only good for six months. So this is outside of its six-month window. So they're just asking for a reapproval. Again, this plat is in good order.
Anything at all change, Doug?
No, sir. Everything's fine with it.
Have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor of the motion to approve, item number 15-2070, Popular Cove subdivision, section three, please say aye. Any opposition? The motion carries. Thank you. Item B, Ridge View at Crescent Ridge, section four. The item number is 15-2078. This is also for a reapproval. Twenty lots on 9.48 acres, zoned RM, located along Twin View Drive, west of Barfield Crescent Road. New South Developers LLC is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Again, this plat is in good order. This plat was ready to be recorded. It just was outside of its six-month window. This was approved by the Planning Commission back in October of last year. Nothing has changed with this plat. It is ready to be recorded. It's just a matter of having a valid approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Motion to approve and a second. All those in favor of the motion to approve, item number 15-2078, please say aye. And motion carries. Thank you. All right. Getting back to our agenda. Item six. These are rezonings that are required to have public hearings. Item number one, 16-8014, has been withdrawn. Item two, item number 16-8015, Vijay Patel for Overall Creek Partners. Location is 4431 Veterans Parkway, Commission District 20. County Commissioner is Trey Gooch. Size is approximately 1.18, 1.1 acres. Tax map 93N. Existing zoning is RM, residential medium density. Proposed zoning is CS, Commercial Services. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Commissioners will recall this application from last month. This particular application is located along Veterans Parkway. You can see on the screen, it's the property outlined in red. The grade out, filled-in areas around it are actually within the city limits of Murfreesboro. If you look in your agenda packets on your iPads, we did include a copy of the zoning map from Murfreesboro City. The property directly across the street in this area here is the location of the new Kroger. This picture's just a little dated, about a year old or so. But these properties are all zoned commercial. I believe these are all zoned commercial fringe on this side of the road and commercial highway across the street, if my memory serves correctly. This did come to the commission last month. The applicant was not present, so the Planning Commission acted to defer the application until this month, so the applicant would be present. I believe the applicants are present today. I see them in the back. Essentially, they want to rezone the property for possible commercial use. Don't have any specific use identified at this point, so there's no concept plan or anything to allude to. As far as the area is concerned, staff does believe this is an area in transition. Again, I've made mention of the new Kroger located right across the street and surrounding commercial development, zoning to the south. There's also some commercial properties to the north that the county has actually approved over the last year. So with that, again, the applicants are present, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for staff? This time, we're ready for our public hearing, and I'll declare it open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number 16-8015, please come forward. Going twice. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Is this house currently occupied or unoccupied? Do you know?
Off the top of my head, when I've seen the property, there are cars there. I'm not sure if those are just owners' cars, or if there's actually, is it a, is there somebody living there?
Rental?
Doug, have you received any phone calls from, it appears they have maybe one neighbor. I'm not sure about the property behind them, but...
I did receive a phone call. I don't believe the person who called me lives adjacent to the property. I think he lives further up the road. And he actually had some concerns about just the zoning in the area in general. He wasn't opposed to the zoning, best I could tell. He was really looking, you know, for the future, for possibility of his own property. But to answer your question, nobody adjacent that I'm aware of that called our office. No, sir.
Do we know anything about the two to the north yet? Do we have any?
I haven't had any conversations with the owners of either of those properties. No, sir.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Subject to any staff comments?
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, for the record, I have stayed because I have a partner in some properties right behind this, and I don't want it to be inappropriate action.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve, item number 16-8015, Vijay Patel for Overall Creek Partners, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 6A3, 16-8016, Mark Jones for Steel Barrel Brewing. Location is 6790 John Bragg Highway. Commission District is six. County Commissioner is Joe Frank Jernigan. Size of the site is approximately 82 acres. Tax map 105. Existing zoning is RM, residential medium density. Proposed zoning is a PUD, Planned Unit Development for Use as a Brewery Facility. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. This property, the applicant is proposing to rezone, as Mr. Phillips stated, to planned unit development for use of, as a brewery facility. But there's a lot more to it than just the brewing aspect. And I'll get into that just briefly. And Mr. Rob Mulchen with SEC Engineering is also present. He's representing the applicants. The initial project will be to create a 15,000-square-foot brewing facility and associated parking area. This facility will provide space for the brewing of craft beers, a tap room, excuse me, for beer sampling and sales, a sensory room, and also laboratories. There will be labs for a new fermentation program that's going to be starting up at MTSU next year. This partnership will allow for the program to utilize the brewery's facilities, to learn about the science of fermentation and the brewing industry. A majority of the acreage is actually going to be remaining as agricultural or open space. About 45% of the southern portion of the property will be unchanged and utilized for livestock, pasture for cattle. Central portion will be for the brewery facility and amenities, as I described, which will be offered to the visitors, and I know Mr. Mulchen will get into a little later. And then there'll be fields for growing dwarf hops that will be used in the process of crafting the beers. The applicant does identify a number of other amenities, again, that Mr. Mulchen will get into. I won't get into that just a whole lot. This is a unique use, and it's kind of a combination of several different uses in one. So after discussing it with the applicant, we thought the planned unit development approach was the best route to go for this. The applicant does plan to utilize the existing access drive on the property. You'll see some pictures of that here shortly. There is an existing median cut in John Bragg Highway, right in front of that access drive. So it'd just be a matter of getting state approval and improving that drive. Landscaping, they're going to preserve as much of the landscaping material as they can. Most of the site, again, is going to remain untouched and undisturbed, you know, except for the grazing of cattle and whatnot. So I don't foresee that really being an issue. There may be some areas where they have to augment some of the existing screening, but again, I think that'll be minimal. And then there are performance standards that the applicant is aware of. Overall, staff is comfortable with this request. This is a very large piece of property, 82 acres, which is going to remain largely undisturbed, with the exception of the activities described. Although it's in a more rural area, I do believe the applicant has taken steps to preserve as much of the rural character of the property as they can, and it is located along John Bragg Highway, which is identified as an urban corridor. So with that, I will just kind of run through some of the shots here that we took of the property. This is actually looking at the driveway, and you can see the median right across the, the two lanes. Those are eastbound lanes. That'll be looking east. This is looking onto the property. Looking down the driveway. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Doug, this property immediately adjacent to the west, is that a church?
Yes, sir, it is.
I know things change a lot in respect to laws, but at one time, there, I believe, was a state law about serving alcohol within so many feet of a church. Does that apply here?
Yes, sir. There are distance requirements. Their building will be outside of that distance. And the applicant has spoken to the members of that church, and I'm sure he'll go into more about that. I won't take the words out of his mouth, but let him take care of that part of it. But there have been conversations of that, and they are aware of the distance requirements, and appear, at this point, appear to meet those requirements.
Questions for staff? Doug, does the applicant want to make a presentation?
I believe he does.
Judy Kush Phillips, Commissioners. Rob Mulchen with SEC, here on behalf of Mr. Mark Jones this evening to kind of give you a quick little brief overview of his brewery project that he's trying to bring to Rutherford County. As Doug stated, this is roughly about an 82-acre site on John Bragg Highway. There is a church directly to the west. And the remainder of the properties around the development are pretty much open or covered in trees and agricultural lands. The purpose of this rezoning is to just simply bring this property into a classification that will allow us to entail all the different elements that we're planning on putting in this property. But again, as, this property is mainly going to be preserved as open space or some kind of recreational space in regards to the property and the development of this from the brewery standpoint. As Doug alluded to, this is going to be a roughly initial 15,000-square-foot brewery facility. This is for craft beers, not a national brand or anything like that, just a local craft beer establishment. The, inside this facility, there'll be roughly, you know, some rooms, you know, there'll be the brewery facility itself. There'll be room for the tap room, which will be for sales and beer tastings and such like that. And then there'll also be some, some labs. As Doug said, this is going to be a, this is working in conjunction with MTSU for a new fermentation program that they're planning on starting up in the, you know, next fall in 2017. So they're looking at making this a live classroom type of environment for the students that are involved in this fermentation program. This will allow them to get out of the, off the campus, come out to the actual brewery, work in labs with some of the brewers to, you know, understand the fermentation process from a brewing standpoint. The fermentation program isn't just solely about brewing. It's about the fermentation altogether. So that means, you know, wines, foods, and, you know, other beverages and such that, you know, fermentation goes on with. So it's not just solely a beer situation, but they're able to utilize this, especially classrooms, in regards to the fermentation process for beer. The, like I said, most of the site is going to be pretty much preserved as open space, but we're going to include the lower portion of the southern portion of the property, and about 45 acres or so is going to be preserved as a pasture space for cattle grazing and such. The middle portion of this will be where the brewery facility is at itself, but also is going to be used for agricultural space for the, for growing the dwarf hops that they will utilize in the brewing process for these craft beers that they'll have on site. So it's kind of a, you know, it's a special situation where you're actually able to grow the, you know, portions of the ingredients and the products for the beer onsite. So you cut down on some infrastructure costs and stuff like that for deliveries and costs on, you know, on the, that side of things. But also, it's a selling point from the standpoint of, you know, bringing people and guests and visitors to the area and to this, to this facility, to see the actual ingredients being grown that are going, that'll go into the product that you're actually getting a taste test and buy and take home for yourself to enjoy. Around this, we'll also include a nine-hole frisbee or disc golf course. So we're kind of creating a recreational element or a park-type of element to go along with this. So this will give visitors and patrons of this an opportunity while they're there, enjoying their, you know, their time outside, to get out and enjoy a disc golf experience if they enjoy that. They're also looking at doing a single par-three hole for like a par-three competition. So with the special events, that kind of stuff, they have something that, you know, we can do some competition between yourself and your friends and other patrons as well. And really, the other element of this is really going to be the outdoors portion from the standpoint of, this is kind of mimicking like Arrington Vineyards. I don't know how many have all been to Arrington Vineyards, but it's more of getting outside, enjoying the weather, enjoying the environment, and enjoying the beer that they sell there. You can bring a picking basket, sit down at tables, sit down on the grass, enjoy yourself. Over time, there'll be live, you know, live music as well to be played into this. As future goes down the line, they're looking at actually incorporating a wedding event venue as well on the site. We're looking at it on the backside, and that, roughly that pasture area over there is kind of where we're looking at doing that. So kind of, some kind of, you know, small wedding building that they'll be able to utilize for weddings and such on that. And the northern portion of the property is mainly going to be for the step system. So this will be a, another facility, another development using the step for our fluent. But they'll also be utilizing the reused water that's generated by the step system as irrigation water for the crops. So it's kind of, we're trying to be in a holistically reusable type of situation for the, you know, for what we're putting out and putting it back into the land and the product involved as well. So, again, thank you for your time, and I'm available for any questions.
Hey, Rob, you touched on a few things. I made a list of questions that I didn't see on your, your master plan there. And one of them included live music, amphitheater, stage, picnic tables, and then I even had a wedding venue down. And you mentioned that all those are potential future happenings, right?
The music stuff, the music stuff will be more or less something that comes on right now as the, once the facility's open. So they're talking like small music, not like a big wedding, you know, not like a big, you know, bandstand kind of thing. So it's kind of, you know, just like Arrington, you know, Arrington Vineyards has small bands and such come and just give entertainment. There's kind of the same element to that, or even if you have somebody that wants to come along with a guitar and open up a small concert kind of thing like that. The wedding, the wedding stuff is what we're looking at coming down the road. You know, right now, it's, you know, it's an idea, something we want to look at as this space evolves and as, you know, a generation of people coming to this evolves.
Okay. And the reason I bring that up is just to remind you and your applicant that the wedding venues have a certain set of restrictions from a planning standpoint on their own, as well as hours and, and certain restrictions for live music. So I don't know if you've addressed that with Doug to this point, but if that's being packaged in this approval, there are certain restrictions on both of those items that you all would need to make sure.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you. Yes, we're ready for our public hearing. At this time, I'll declare the public hearing open for item number 16-8016, Steel Barrel Brewing Company. All those wishing to speak, please come forward. Come on, you guys got to be here for something tonight. Seeing no one. Wow, here we go. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Stuart Leach, and I own, just purchased actually within the last 18 months, the property that's, here it would be above, it's actually to the Murfreesboro side of the Steel Barrel. And I have spoken with Rob's, and my intention in the future is actually to build a home for myself, probably within 300 to 400 feet of the most active area. So I just had some questions as to hours of operation and even the, the, pardon me, the fermentation, just, just thinking about noise, traffic, even odor, if any of those things would ever be, have a bearing on, on my land. And just wondered if maybe Rob could speak to those things. So I'm neither foreign or, I guess I'm a tentative yes now, and just wanted to get more detail for the, for the committee. Thanks.
Thank you. Doug, would you want to explain how site plan will be developed?
Yes, sir. If this rezoning is approved, then the next step that would, of course, from this point, it would go to the full county commission next month for another public hearing. If it's approved at that stage, because this is just a recommending body, so if it's approved at the legislative body next month, then their next step would be do a site plan approval, where we'd look at building locations, parking, screening. Of course, again, they'd be, the performance standards would be in effect for this as well. As far as specific questions regarding the fermentation process, I would defer those to the applicant. They, they would know a little bit more about that than I would. But my understanding is all of the program and everything is going to be indoors, not outside. But I'll let them speak to that. So, does that answer your question? At least on your end, okay.
Applicant care to address those questions at this time?
Following Mr. Leach's comments, from the fermentation process standpoint, that'll all be conducted indoors. So from an odor standpoint, we're not aware of anything that would go on through the brewing process. There'll be, you know, especially since this is a craft or smaller scale-sized brewing process, that there really isn't going to be much of an excess odor that would come out of the facility itself on that side of things. And we're looking at, from the standpoint of the music venues and the noise and that such, and the hours of operation, we're kind of also looking at it in the same kind of timeframe like Arrington Vineyards. So you're looking at that nine, 10 o'clock timeframe, wherein that usually shuts down a little, you get a little bit of some dusk, you know, at certain times of the year, but as the evening draws on, kind of closing down. But we'll also follow what the regulations, you know, state in regards to wedding venues and, and music venues as well.
Do you happen to know what kind of build-out capacity you're looking at with all these future buildings? I mean, is there a certain gallon number or some size? I know it's a small craft brewery, but when I'm looking at this plan and that facility shoved up against that property line, I mean, there's, it looks to me, looking at the contours, it looks like a hill there that sort of provides a little screen and block. And if there was ever a spill or anything like that, it looks like it would stay onsite. Is that what we're seeing there?
Yeah, we've got the building set 100 feet off the existing property line at this point in time. And like, like we, Doug had spoken to, with this being as open as it's planning to be, we're incorporating and saving all the tree boundaries around it. So we're looking at about a 50-foot swath of land that we will not disturb regards to the property lines to preserve those tree rows, and then utilize the remaining portions after that internally of that for the site to actually develop. So the buildings right now are shown about 100 feet off, so it's about another 50 feet and so for vehicular traffic and such to make deliveries to those buildings, and, you know, solid waste, that kind of stuff in regards to that. So you've got another 50 feet of space in there that we can incorporate, you know, if there was such a thing as a spill or something like that, there'd be room in there for us to maintain, you know, any kind of, you know, the main premise was with the setting of these buildings, especially the main brewery facility, is that is a knoll right there, like you said. And so more or less, we're trying to put this on the ridge top of that. So you kind of get that, you know, kind of overview of the whole property and also give an off-site view of the surrounding portion of the county as well. Mr. Hughes asked me to talk about the buildings themselves. The buildings themselves will be a steel structure with a steel exterior. You can see representation of that building in the book. It's going to be, it's a, it's a very nice, on page 14 of booklet, it's a steel frame, a steel exterior. So it kind of going to look rustic, kind of blend into the site as well in regards to trying to make it, you know, look as part of the farm character of the property that we're trying to preserve.
Thank you again. Anyone, anyone else wish to speak?
I just wanted to take a second. I'm Bud Fisher. I'm Dean of the College of Basic and Applied Sciences at MTSU. We will be the group that will be part of this project, or we're partnering with them to try to give our students an opportunity. We will have a fermentation science, we hope. THEC will approve it in December for next August start date. It will be a fermentation science. It will be a science degree. You will have to take chemistry, biology, physics, as well as math and business. So it will be a difficult degree. It will not only deal with brewing, but it will also deal with food and produce, as well as what would be considered to be vehicle, gasoline, so ethanol and those types of things. So that will be all done on campus as well as here. We are really excited about this opportunity because it offers our students a opportunity to get hands-on experience within the, what would be a area that they may be interested in, as well as to be able to do what we hope there, which is quality control and quality assurance kind of work. So a lot of technical work being done there. So it gives our students hands-on opportunities. Just wanted to say we're excited.
Anyone else?
My name is William Colom. I live, I have a house that's towards the rear of the property that I built just two years ago. So a couple of concerns that I have, I'd like to see if they've got any proposed construction drawings to go through, water, power, drainage, as far as overall site drainage. I'd like to see hazardous materials list that's going to be on the property. I'm also concerned about the music and the, definitely the position of the wedding venue. Sound travels quite a bit out there, so I like that it's very, very quiet. That's why we bought the property there. So I'm really concerned about the, the noise level. I don't know what kind of decimals they're looking at that's going to be produced from that. that's going to be produced from that. Hours of operation, obviously, I don't know if it's proposed, and what other things they're planning to do with the property. But I've just got several questions that I'd just like to see, and I can spend some time with them to, to go through. But there's a lot of concern that I have, and I know several of the other parties that couldn't be here tonight that have expressed that also with me, so.
Doug, you want to readdress that?
Well, as far as the, the drainage of the property and those kind of issues that he was asking about, when it gets to the site plan stage, they'll have, they'll be required to submit a full-blown drainage plan. That's not really required on this particular step of the process. Mike can speak a little bit more to the, just his, you know, he's looked at the property as far as the drain, the topography and everything. He could probably give us a, a little insight onto that. The hours of operation again and things like that, as far as the decibels, there are limits in the zoning ordinance that do deal with sound and, you know, at the property line, lighting at the property line, levels of lighting and sound. They'll have to abide by those particular standards. The hours of operation for these different events and things, as the applicant said, they would abide by what's in the zoning ordinance regarding any wedding events or live music or anything like that, which I believe is about ten o'clock as, as was stated. So it'd be no later than any of that. And plus, as he said, in the evening, as that gets later in the year, you know, dusk comes earlier and earlier. So those events would become earlier and earlier as well. So Mike, I'll just turn it over to him if he has any just, just general comments on the drainage of the property.
There, there is a slight drain that runs through the middle of the property. It's an intermittent stream, and most of the site drains towards this stream and, and then would cross under John Bragg Highway. So any increase in impervious area, the, the parking lot, additional structures would have to be offset with some stormwater detention that would meet pre versus post. So I mean, we wouldn't run any more water off on, on the, into the stream than, than what was there before. And that would be, like Doug said, in the site plan process.
This rezoning is approved. The concerns that the gentleman just had will all be addressed at the site plan. So your attendance would be encouraged at, when we develop the site plan, and all of those concerns would be addressed at that particular time. Our main goal tonight is to see if this property is suitable for this zoning. And then all of the concerns that, that I think both of the gentlemen had would be addressed when we develop that site plan. Anyone else?
But all in all, we've, we've looked at this site for various reasons. A couple of people have looked at putting potential subdivisions on this property, and, and lack of suitable souls would not allow a subdivision development. So staying as an agricultural use is probably a good use.
Good evening. This is, I'm Alan Stemke with Consolidated Utility District, and I just wanted to clarify one point in their proposal as far as using the step system. That's still in a very preliminary stage, because this is a different use of the step system for a brewery waste product versus sanitary sewage coming from a domestic subdivision, or domestic, a residential subdivision. So not ruling it out at this point, but it is still very early in the process, and I believe the owners are also working closely with TDEC on all those regulations, and I'm sure something will be resolved as the project moves forward.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Chairman, I did want to disclose that the current landowner is a distant relative of mine.
Thank you.
I believe I saw on one of the previous slides, it had a realtor sign on this eighty-two acre tract, the property and stuff. So, well, I appreciate the neighbors being concerned about music and, and noise and stuff. I mean, I also see a spot where a step system is proposed, and if that same step system went in, just rough math in my head, fifteen thousand foot lots on another sixty acres, you know, I could easily get well over a hundred lots in there, you know. And, and personally, I'd rather see approximately sixty acres that remain green space with some come and go with schools and, and events, instead of having a hundred plus houses there with traffic and noise and all from people every, every day. So in, in my opinion, we, I, I like the idea of a, of a large tract of land staying predominantly green, instead of being cut up in fifteen thousand foot lots like we do three or four times every month.
For motion in that will?
And if nobody else wants to speak, I'll make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
Second. Motion to approve and a second. Other discussion. Follows in favor the motion to approve item number sixteen dash A zero one six, Steel Barrel Brewing. Please say aye. Any opposition that motion carries? For those of you that are interested, this will also be subject to a public hearing before the full county commission, and that county commission meeting will be Thursday, November the seventeenth, six p.m., right here in this room. Item six eight four, Joni Cook has been withdrawn. Six eight five, item number sixteen dash A zero zero nine, Bev de Long, location eighty-four sixty-one Franklin Road, Commission District Twenty, the county commissioner's Trey Gooch. Size of the site is approximately five acres, tax map ninety-four. Existing zoning is RM, residential medium density. Proposed zoning is a PUD, planned unit development for a self-storage facility. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. You'll forgive me, I hit something on here apparently I shouldn't have hit. So while you're seeing that on the screen, I'm not seeing that at all. So I'll go through the, the history of the property here just for background, and Mr. Hughes went to go get one of the, the cable guys to help us out with the, apparently my ineptness on the computer. This property was the subject of rezoning back in August of last year. The applicant was requesting commercial services zoning at the time, again, for the use of a self-storage facility. Following that public hearing, the planning commission did recommend denial of that by a unanimous vote. We did include the minutes of that particular meeting with your agenda materials. The applicant has since submitted a new application for an identical use, but as a planned unit development as opposed to conventional zoning. There is a pattern book that was included with your agenda packets on the website, the SharePoint site, and are also on your iPads tonight. This plan does show only a portion of the property being used for self-storage, about five acres, as opposed to the entire property, which is about nine and a half. The plan is to develop a hundred units initially with ultimate build-out of about three hundred units. Additional buildings would be added when the existing, or when the capacity reaches about eighty percent occupancy. A complete build-out would be anticipated to be three to five years. Hours would be from eight a.m. to eight p.m. with possible seasonal adjustments, and would employ between one to three people. The existing house would also remain and be used as an office. This item was brought up to the planning commission back in July of this year. There were a number of concerns that were brought up at the planning commission's public hearing. Those concerns included traffic, safety of the roadways, appropriateness of non-residential zoning in the area, particularly on the south side of Franklin Road. I also included a copy of the minutes of that particular meeting with your agenda packets as well, and they are included, again, on your iPads. Following the public hearing, the applicant has collected a good amount of information regarding the concerns that were brought up at that meeting. The applicant did express a desire to return to the planning commission to address some of those concerns that were brought up at the July two thousand sixteen meeting. Since the matter had already been considered by the planning commission, staff advised the best course of action would be to withdraw the existing application, resubmit, and start the process anew, which is what they have done. Applications before the board of commissioners that are denied have to wait six months before they reapply, being that this is a, just a recommendation, a recommending body, at this point they are able to basically do what they have done, withdraw the application and, and reapply. Access to the property will be off of Franklin Road directly. Originally, the plan showed Baltimore Road as the access. There were some concerns as to feasibility of this access. Ultimately, they did move it, originally to Deer Run, and then, eventually they moved it over to Franklin Road. And I'll hold on just a second here while I apparently hit something. I don't know what I hit. Sorry. Just moving on. There we go. Thank you very much. Is everything, yeah, everything's there. Thanks, Danny. Again, access being from Franklin Road opposed to either Baltimore Road or Deer Run. The applicant's engineers also completed a site visibility study, which we did include with your agenda packets today, as well as we did back in July. Landscaping would require a type-two buffer around the perimeter of the site. It also appears that buildings along the eastern and western lines would be used as part of that buffering requirement. And then the performance standards, of course, would be part of that. Let me just run through the pictures just real quick here. Okay, this is the, the site in question, and these are just some of the surrounding area pictures. You can see that's looking toward the east, towards Murfreesboro. Across the street, onto the property. And down toward Franklin. I know the applicant does have a presentation to make tonight. Mr. Chairman, I'll leave it to your discretion as to if you want to call her up now or wait till after the public hearing, or however you want to handle it.
Is the applicant here and wish to make a presentation? Or the applicant's representative, or both?
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to come back to you. At our last presentation, there were a number of issues that were raised. We were not prepared for those issues because they were a surprise to us. So this is a presentation based on those issues. It's nothing new. You haven't heard them before, but you didn't hear our side because we weren't aware of them. So I just have a lot of detail. I'm a nerd. I used to be an accountant, but I have all of that detail and all the calculations, as well as the sources of the data, and I'll give that to you once we're done. All right. By the way, there are three snippets from that little, from the last presentation, and you'll be hearing those as well, and they're, they're audio. All right. According to the national average of storage, there is approximately six point seven vehicles that go on to any site based on a hundred units. And one of the issues that was brought up is that there would be increased traffic. Now, as you heard Doug say a few minutes ago, at maximum at build-out, we're going to have three hundred units. Now, when you think about that, three hundred units times six point seven is twenty-one vehicles per day. And our hours are going to be from eight a.m. to eight p.m., the gate hours. And so we're talking about, at maximum, one vehicle every thirty minutes on average. So this is not a high-traffic use. So I actually did a study in the area, and there were seven. Go ahead, Doug. Slightly higher than that, based on some of the other facilities that I looked at. So we know this is a high-use urban corridor. We know that there is going to be a lot of changes here. So let's say, what would be a good alternate use? And so I did some research, and I found out that if we were able, with the current zoning, to add three home sites with two people in each home, according to the USDOT, there is approximately six point nine seven vehicle trips per day, per person. So that means that that would generate forty-one point eight two vehicles. Now, the proposed use, you can see, if you would, Doug, next, would only generate twenty-one. If we went ahead and, during the current zoning, and we redid the housing, and we added three houses, we're talking about forty-two vehicle trips. So over the period of the year, we're talking about over seven thousand additional vehicle trips. So I don't think that increased traffic is really an issue for this particular zoning request. So next, the item that they, that was brought up was the number of accidents in the area. So in order to address that, I went to Rutherford County, I went to the Murfreesboro Police, and I also went to the state. And I asked them for information on accidents in the area. The most useful one was Rutherford County. The criteria that I gave them was I asked them for July of two thousand and thirteen to July of two thousand and sixteen, from Franklin Road on the west, which is right here, over, and, and here's the property here in the middle, over to Veterans Parkway, approximately five point five acre miles. The results was that there were thirty-two accidents in this area. There were two in the immediate area, and there were zero fatalities. Now, when I'm talking about the immediate area, I'm really talking about a half mile in either direction. I figure if there's an accident in that area, certainly it would come to rest within half a mile. The results of what they gave me are listed there above, and you can see that the number of dead are zero. And, but there was one fatality during this time, which is underneath that second highlighted area, and we'll talk about that in a minute. But the fact of the matter is, there were only two accidents during this three-year period. Now, I did a lot of calculations, and if you take the t-dot statistics, and you divide, or you multiply the number of vehicle trips over that three-year period, times, you multiply it by three sixty-five, and then you annualize it, you see that there are over two million vehicle trips during that time. Thirty-two accidents divided by three is ten point seven. And here's all the statistics on it. But the really important one is, for one mile on that road during that period of time, your chances right here of being in an accident are less than one in one hundred thousand. I'd say that road's pretty safe, wouldn't you? All right. So how does that compare to other areas? So next, I talked to Murfreesboro Police, and I said, all right, what is the distance from Franklin Road, on Franklin Road for the same period of time, from Veterans Parkway to Fortress? Approximately one point one mile. The response was thirty-eight accidents. Thirty-eight. Now, there's only thirty-two on our five-mile stretch. During, this, this area has more traffic lanes. There's a center lane there. Most of the area is five lanes. It has traffic lights, and the speed limit is forty-five. So, go ahead, Doug. The same statistics and the same calculations, and you can see that of that thirty-eight divided by three is twelve point seven accidents per year, and you do all the same statistics, and the number of accidents per vehicle per mile are twice what they are on the other side of Veterans Parkway. This area is half the accidents than this area. I think that's a safe area. All right. The next item that was brought up is there were two extremely fatal accidents. Now, if you remember the statistics I showed you a few minutes ago, it showed one accident, which is at Fox Ridge Drive. Now, Fox Ridge Drive is three-quarters of a mile from our property, which is right here on the left. There, it's a completely flat area. There are clear lines of sight. And the vehicles were traveling from the east. They weren't traveling from the direction coming from our property. They hadn't even reached it yet. And yet, my neighbors said that it was an extremely fatal accident, as if it had happened in our area. Now, there was no other information included from the county, or from the sheriff, but I did search the web, and I found another accident at the corner. But I did search the web, and I found another accident at the corner of Veterans Parkway in Franklin. That also had clear lines of sight, but it was right near the stoplight. And as I understand it, a truck hit a motorcycle from the rear. The driver was ejected and ran over by another vehicle. But can you see that distance there? That is two and a half miles from our site. Go ahead, Doug. So my question is, what do these accidents have to do with this project? I don't believe they have anything to do with it. And I believe that statistically, the roadway in front of 8461 Franklin is safer than the roadway from Franklin, on Franklin Road, east of Veterans. Can the road safely sustain the traffic? Now, remember, we're talking about 21 cars a day at Build Out. That's one every 30 minutes. So I want you to hear what one of my neighbors said at that meeting.
If I was driving in or out of the storage unit, I would feel fine, because I'm sitting on top of a hill, and I can see both ways.
Now, that's my opponent. He is acknowledging that there are clear sightlines there. So let's go to the site distance exhibit, and it's in your pattern book. And you can see that it shows it at 1,372 feet and 1,301 feet. And this is right along this area here. And again, listen to what was said at that meeting.
Because they're quoted in here as 1,301 feet and 1,372, which is better than any two-lane road in multiple counties. I mean.
All right, so if that's true, we have some pretty good sightlines, wouldn't you say? Go ahead, Doug. So what we did is, we stood on the driveway, and we took a picture, looking to the west. Go ahead, Doug. Now, I did take a picture, and it was very similar to this. And I thought, "Well, you know what? This is an even better picture, because it was presented at the last presentation." Now, the arrow here on the right shows Puckett Road. That is 1,372 feet. And do you see Deer Run here? Can you see it clearly? Why would this particular road be a problem? Now, I understand, yes, there is a dip in the road, but it's before you even get to our property. And our property in no way makes it worse. All right. Whoops, go back one more. All right, so now we're going to stand in our driveway, and we're going to look to the east. Go ahead. Again, I did not use the picture from the commission, because right here is our 1,301 feet. And then right here is Deer Run Road. Again, we have clear lines of sight. All right, so I called Doug, and I said, "You know, Doug, there was some talk about possibly adding a turn lane. What, who would be the person at T-DOT that would make that decision?" And he said Phil Trammell. So I called Phil, and I said, "If we had a busy road on an urban corridor, and we generated 21 cars per day, and we had clear sightlines, would it generate, would it warrant turn lanes?" And his answer was no. 21 cars per day does not warrant turn lanes. Remember that that five cars, or 21 cars per day is after five years. All right, so let's talk about the dips in the road. If you could imagine, I'm trying to think, we have moving vans that may be coming in and out. And I'm trying to think of the slowest, biggest vehicle that I could think of that would be comparable. And here you have a picture of the, one of the buses that stored down Baltimore Road. Can you see it coming onto the roadway? It actually is on both lanes. It's slow, and it's large. And I thought, "Well, that is certainly representative of what we would have with a moving van." Now, remember our accident facts. There were two within half a mile. Oh, by the way, one was due to a U-turn by one of the drivers, and the other one was called in attention by one of the drivers. Neither one of those were a site error issue. Now, the two buses are stored down Baltimore Road, and they go in and out every day. And then there's also a bus stop at the end of the road. Now, if you take that times 180 school days for three years, there were 5,400 bus trips in and out of that road, and there was not a single accident in three years. I contend that moving trucks are no more dangerous than buses. In fact, those moving trucks are going to be entering the road at the top of the hill. So I contend that it may even alert people as they're coming in and off of the road to slow down, because you can see them there. So I believe that having those buses, or those moving trucks, coming off and on the highway will not in any way jeopardize the safety of the local residents. Now, I was trying to stand here, and I was looking at it. The actual new Egress site will be right here. And I thought, "What, what is the issue?" Because, yes, this is a little bit lower, but the problem is over here. And yes, this one is a little bit low, and the problem is over here, on the outside of this. This is the high point. You can see it, and then there's a slight dip, and then you come back up in the road. And the way it was presented, I believe it sounded like we were going to be putting our neighbors in jeopardy, when in fact, we're going to be alerting traffic on the road that people are coming in and out. I believe that cars pulling in and out of this property will easily be seen, and that in fact, people who are coming off of either Deer Run or Baltimore Road will be alerted, or the traffic will be alerted, and they'll slow down more, because they can see the cars, or the buses, the moving vans. All right, so let's talk about the impact on the rural way of life. Have you ever heard the statement that false information, false evidence appearing real is fear? Now, we've already talked about the unsafe roadways, and hopefully I've been able to show you that they're not as unsafe as they indicated. But I think the real problem here is change. Everyone's afraid of change. I know I am. And my neighbors are probably just as human as the rest of us. And I think that's probably one of the main problems. There was information about the sinkholes. We had geotech firm. We had engineers all over that property. No sinkholes were ever found. They talked about drainage, and we took away the area that was under contention. Drainage in this area is now excellent. But during the neighborhood meetings, there was talk of meth labs, increased crime, and us using our cameras to point at the residents as they come and go. I assure you, that is not the case. We will take a picture of every photo ID of tenants. We will give them contracts. We'll make them aware of all of our rules. And we will not be recording anyone's movements, except those who are on-site. Another issue was that we want our children to be able to see the stars at night. Well, in fact, wall pack lights create minimal light pollution. Here is a representation of what our buildings will look like. And you can see that the wall packs are mounted below the roof line, and they're created specifically to illuminate drive lanes. And at the very top, there's a tray here that produces a shelter, so that the light does not go up. It goes down and in. Another thing that the neighbors talked about was they wanted to live in a quiet area. We will have a large driveway. We'll have a sign at the street. We can easily be seen, and we're going to make a very wide throat on the driveway. People coming and going are going to know where we are. So I don't see traffic being an issue. And I don't, I don't know. I don't know, what are they referring to, and they want quiet? I don't know. Storage is a good neighbor, and it's a quiet business. Another thing that the neighbors mentioned is, they said that storage would decrease their property values. I have a lot of friends in real estate. I have talked to commercial brokers. I've talked to residential real estate individuals. I've talked to appraisers, both commercial and residential. And with every, without exception, they said, "A well-designed, well-maintained business in a high-traffic area should increase, not decrease, those valuations." This would be consistent with current land use. There's an auto repair shop, a pool company, a landscape, a nursery company, a construction company, and a motorcycle sales and service company. All of those have large equipment entering the highway, and they have patrons coming on a regular basis. And I would suspect that they create more traffic than our storage unit is going to. So I want to ask you a question. How is denying this particular zoning request going to affect future development along Highway 96? Again, I have a snippet from the last meeting, and this is Amy Baltimore, and she lives down Baltimore Road.
Again, we're not against commercial development either, on land already designated commercial, and in areas where the roads can safely sustain the increased traffic.
Now, I hope I've already shown you that the roads can sustain this increased traffic. Now, she's saying that they're not against any kind of commercial development in areas that already are designated commercial. Does that mean that she doesn't want any additional commercial development along Highway 96? Should commercial development be stopped along this highway? Would we be better having hundreds of houses along that area? I believe this is not a safety issue. I believe that this is a property rights issue. You see, my biggest opponents have been the Baltimore family. They owned this 9.5-acre parcel. It's on a busy urban corridor. They're the ones that chose to sell it. Prior to the purchase, I visited the other neighbors, and I asked their opinion, one of which was Kenny Baltimore, who is Amy's uncle, and he's arranged for the sale of the property. Another one is Chris Moore, who was very vocal at the last meeting. And both of them, when I talked to them, said, "Storage is no problem." On September 9th, I had Ms. Baltimore, Mr. Moore, and Mr. Tenpenny down to my house, and I said, "If I could prove that the roadway was safe, would you approve this project?" And they all said yes. And then I said, "Is there anything, as a developer, that I can do that you would, would make you more comfortable with this?" And they said, "No, nothing." So I contend that this is not a safety issue. I'm just a person, you know? I'm not a big corporation. I'm not anything, except a person who bought a property with the intention of developing storage, and I've not wavered for that. I need you to vote yes for this rezoning. And I'll give you the statistics here, and then I'll wait for you if you have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Long?
I'm sorry.
Not from the July meeting. The only thing that we've changed is that we're going to widen the throat. My plans for developing storage have not changed from the beginning. I was very clear with the neighbors on that. This site plan has been changed, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Long. This time, I'll declare the public hearing open for item number 16-A009. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. And as you're doing so, I'll remind the audience that our guidelines are three minutes, unless you represent a group. And if you do, you can take as long as you want. Just let me know. Anyone wishing to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner's staff. My name is Trey Gooch, 3917 Matson Pike. I represent District 20 on the County Commission. I will say this, when this issue first came up, I did oppose this development. I did not oppose the concept, but just the way that it was, it looked in the particular plans. Having said that, I did meet with Mrs. DeLonge and Mr. Roundtree on numerous occasions to help satisfy my opposition. I did oppose it for, for maybe lighting issues, safety, traffic, and where the proposed entrance was going to go. This proposal has been changed, I think, three times, trying to address every need that I had and that the neighbors had. Looking at this logically, and taking the motions out, I have changed my position and will support this. The last hurdle that I had to overcome was the traffic safety. And after Mrs. DeLonge's presentation with me and Mr. Cloud's office on the research that she did, I am convinced, too, that this would be a safe development. And I think that if you look at all the businesses that would impact a community or a neighborhood the least, that self-storage would be at the top of that list. I would ask that the planning commission send this to the full commission with a positive recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gooch. Anyone else wish to speak, for or against?
Hi, my name is Heather Macaron, and I live at 226 Deer Run Road. I do want to start off saying I'm a certified residential real estate appraiser. I've been appraising residential properties for over 17 years. And we just heard from Mrs. DeLonge on how she believes that this should increase property values in the area. Now, as we all know, real estate value is derived from the market, and what a typical purchaser in the area would be willing to pay for a property. And in a residential area such as this, which is zoned residential, it is comprised mostly of small acreage lots with hobby farms, livestock, equestrian. It is, as people were saying earlier, like kind of a semi-rural area. And people who are looking for acreage properties, that is the type of what they're looking for. Everyone can see all of the, all the building and development that's going on, and demand for properties are at a high right now for land. There is a property on Baltimore Road, a lot of 1.66 acres, that was listed for over a year before it just sold recently. And this property didn't even sell on the market. Somebody from the neighborhood purchased it. Properties of acreage size are typically selling between around... Properties of acreage size are typically selling between around 50 to 70 days on market. So, and I do know for a fact on a couple different people that came to look at that property that were interested in it, were turned off when they saw the signs about for future development there. So one of the four components of value is demand. And the demand for residential properties in that area is gonna go down if there is a commercial property there, and we have evidence of this already, and it has not even been built yet. So I do not believe that that is the case, because we have clear evidence already of a decrease in property values in the area because of this. I also wanted to talk, I know you mentioned, and you had a great presentation, that you talked to the sheriff's office, and I know you checked accidents up to July. I personally had my car totaled. I was in an accident on 96 there on Deer Run, August 5th, okay? That wasn't included in there. And I do believe another one, one was like a week after me. There was another accident. So within that month period after all the data that you did pull up, there were two more. And I know, I think one of the differences is, and we do acknowledge that there is a rise in the driveway right there, but one of the issues that we have is that a lot of people driving U-Hauls or vans or trailers that are going to that location, 96, people drive very fast there. That is why my car was totaled when I was rear-ended on that street. And a lot of people, because of the dips in the road, they may not be able to see the people on the top of there. And a lot of people that go to storage units are driving trailers that are not used to driving trailers. I do have horses. I have a horse trailer. It takes me a long time to get off Deer Run Road onto 96. And it's because I do it all the time, and I know Mr. Baltimore drives his buses, and he does it all the time, and he's used to it. And you go to the end of your road, and you stop and wait. And I literally have to sit there and count, and wait, and make sure that there are no cars hidden in that dip before I can go. And there are gonna be a lot of people that are driving on 96 that are not used to driving trailers, and it comes up really fast when you're going. And I understand that you're gonna have a wide driveway, as you said, and a sign. But when you're going 60 miles an hour, and there are cars right behind you, it's hard to stop really quickly and to turn. And, you know, I do know that there are more accidents that have maybe not even been reported. I do have another friend that was in a car accident on that street, which I know they didn't have police involved. And that was about four months ago, and that did not appear to be in the statistics that you have. So I do not believe that the street is as safe as it may have appeared to be from the presentation that you provided. Thank you.
Michael Graham, I live at 1120 Deer Run, and that was me in the video. I don't know if I can forgive them for putting me up on that video. I didn't know that was that ugly, but, yes, I said that I would feel very safe driving out of the storage unit if it was sitting there, because I can see both ways. But I'm not driving out of there. I'm driving out of Deer Run. I have a 15-year-old that's driving out of Deer Run. I cannot see cars coming over the hill from Franklin. I have to count cars going into that valley and coming out, or I have to count how many seconds until a car is to get out there. According to the Rutherford County GIS system, from the crest of that hill to Deer Run Road is 230 feet. From the Tennessee Driver's Manual, at 60 miles an hour, under ideal conditions, stopping distance is 280 feet. So you're gonna come up 50 feet short if you're coming toward Murfreesboro, and you need to stop. I see a lot of people driving on that road, 65, 70 miles an hour in the rain. I have been passed going 60 miles an hour in the dark, in the rain, on a double-yellow line uphill. It's just, there's crazy people driving on that road. I have a 14-year-old that will be getting his permit soon. I have two other kids that are gonna be getting driver's permits. There's other families on there. Now, my concern is not with people coming in and out of that storage unit, it's with my family trying to get out of Deer Run. And adding more traffic is not gonna help the situation. I think people trying to turn in and out of there will increase the chance that somebody's gonna try to pass them because they're turning too slow. There's also, from my understanding, another development that's coming down from Shores Road that will have an entrance onto 96. So we're just putting more traffic on there, and it's the more cars I have to look for. But I mean, according to these numbers, there is just not stopping distance if you're coming toward Murfreesboro, and you come over that crest of the hill, and there's somebody sitting in that intersection. If that happens, I will be hit. And if I am hit, it will be hit at a fairly high rate of speed. Thank you.
I hate talking in front of people, so just give me a second. My name is Jason Baltimore. I live at 356 Baltimore Road, very end on Baltimore. My wife, Amy, is usually the one that does all the talking. She's a lot better at expressing things, and I tend to let emotions and things like that get under me, so bear with me a second. Change is one thing. I've lived out, I haven't lived out there all my life, but I've been out there all my life. I've seen all kinds of stuff come and go, seen accidents, I've seen people, you know, just things that you don't, y'all haven't seen. If you've lived around here, you probably have seen or something. One of the things that I'm gonna address is the safety thing. I do drive a bus. There was a picture of a bus pulling out, which is technically illegal to photograph school buses, but that's another thing. When I pull out in the mornings and in the afternoons, I have the, I guess, luxury of pulling out when there's not much traffic. Mr. Long was standing out there this morning when I pulled out at 6 o'clock. There's not much traffic. I do have to take both lanes to get out, is part of it. Part of my route now is on Franklin Road, right really close to my subdivision. I pull in and out of there, you know, about six times a day, six to eight times a day, in a bus, off of Baltimore, off of Deer Run, off of other roads. And there's times where I have to hit the lights, we have to hit the lights at least 200 feet before. There's not 200 feet to where, I've had to move stops, because it's not enough safety to get the stop sign out to make a stop. It's, you hear statistics, and statistics speak volumes for people that are analytical that that's what matters to them. But you can't put a price on a human life. When you have somebody turning in and out of there, and you're driving up and down this road, we've seen this stuff happen. Also, again, you know, we appreciate all the effort and everything that has been put forth to accommodate everything, you know, us and the people in the neighborhoods, but it's not the time and the place. One day, it will be, and there's nothing when any of us can do it, but right now, it's not right. Again, I'm sorry, I'm trying to keep all my thoughts together, but I'd just like to, y'all, to consider that it's already been voted down twice. We're back here again, and we're gonna leave it up to y'all ultimately, but it's about all I can say, I guess, so I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is David Tin Penny. I live at 869 Deer Run Road. And yes, we are back here again, and our biggest concern is safety. Mr. Long is correct. East of Veterans Parkway is a lot more dangerous. In 2008, my wife and myself were involved in a very serious accident. We were T-boned. My truck rolled over twice, and the paramedics got there, they said they were looking for victims. They weren't looking for us to be sitting out on the sidewalk, holding, bleeding. But anyway, we did survive. There was another accident, and it's closer to McNeil, which is closer to Deer Run. I don't know the date. It may have been outside of her timeframe. But there was a fatality. The gentleman that owns the horse barn right down the road, Mr. Tim Thompson, he was a good friend of mine for years. He was killed in a collision right there on Highway 96, and it was a flat area. There's not much of a hill there where he was hit. Somebody's just not paying attention. So there again, I think, pulling out of her driveway, you have good visibility. All the other directions, visibility is a little bit scarce. People do fly up and down that road. I leave about 5:30 in the morning. I miss a little of it coming in the afternoon. You've gotta take your chances coming and going. So there again, I do appreciate your opportunity. I appreciate the effort she has put into presenting this and trying to accommodate things, but it's still a safety factor until that road grows, because there's gonna be more development, there's gonna be more people move in, there's gonna be houses. So we've got all that extra traffic to contend with outside of that. I know she keeps mentioning there's only gonna be 21 cars a day on average when she gets to full capacity, or 6.7, excuse me, per day. But you gotta remember, most of those are working people. They're gonna be there on the weekends. So all that's gonna do is put all of those cars coming and going, on average, probably Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So I mean, that's just gonna increase that area that much more when more people are off work, they're gonna be traveling down 96, going places, to ballgames, to everything that you can imagine. So that is gonna create more traffic, not per day, but in a given area, amount of time, usually on the weekends, because that's when most of us that are working people that use storage units are gonna travel to get things. Thank you.
I'm Chris Moore. I live at 8597 Franklin Road. And not sure where to go with this. I was writing so fast, I may have to flip through here, but I see several, several issues with what Mr. Long has presented. Apparently, put a lot of time into that, very slick presentation, in my opinion, from a land developer who has moved into our neighborhood to develop this property from the beginning. That's, that was her intention. First thing I'd like to address is her a minute ago saying that, I can't remember exact words, but that I, that I said that I was okay with a storage unit. I never, ever said that. She approached, she came with myself and my wife one day, when she first moved to the area, she said, "I would like to ask you," actually, she didn't ask, she said, "I'm thinking about putting storage units, a few storage units, few," was her exact words, "on the other side of my house." So that was how all this started, which, in my opinion, was misleading from the beginning. So the next, the next thing that I hear from her, she calls me over and asks me to come over to her home and look at a storage plan. Her plan that she presented to me, I believe, was over 400 units, maybe even more than that, and they were 60 feet from my bedroom window, and probably over 300 units. That was her, that was her plan for a few storage units. And so I take great issue with that. I feel like being misled. Also, you know, we have been very vocal, the traffic, again, I feel like is being muddled, because we all live there, we see what's going on on a daily basis. I have, and I'm not sure about these statistics as well, because I have, I am never home. I work all the time. We're gone a lot on the weekends, I'm hardly ever at home. But I have personally witnessed four accidents in the time that I'm at home. So, and that's walked up on them, and I've heard about at least two or three others. And again, I have to question whether Mr. Long, I don't wanna put words in her mouth, but why she stopped at July, because there have been two other accidents, at least two accidents that we know of since Ju, since our, the last planning commission meeting that we have here. Also, I think that it was a little distorted about the commercial businesses. They're a little further away than I believe that we're, that she's acting like they are, a little further down, a little further down the road. Also, Puckett Road, I think, was a little, maybe just a little misrepresented. I don't have the exact footage, but I believe that Puckett Road is probably, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's probably 80 to 100 yards maybe until the, from Puckett Road, until that hill starts cresting. So Puckett Road is not really the issue. It's the, it's the crest and the bowl that's created when, when folks come over there. Now, I've pulled out of my, I've been fortunate not to have an accident, but I can't, these people do not drive 55 through that stretch. I've seen people going at least 80 multiple times. I had one day that I was distracted. I looked down, I was coming out of my driveway, I looked down for a minute, and when I looked up and started pulling out, somebody came down there doing at least 80, 85 miles an hour. They were flying, if I, if I would've been 10 seconds, or probably five seconds earlier, I would've been dead. There's no, that guy would have clobbered me. When my wife pulls out, she intentionally, because of how fast these people top this hill, she pulls, she waits for, to make sure nobody's coming this way, just in case she pulls out, that somebody can, can actually get around her and not, and not cause a huge scene. We have, kinda have a little joke, you know, I have 16-year-old girls, too, that just started driving, and, you know, she's, or they all prayed up before they leave our driveway, because it's just, it's crazy. It just, the, the traffic is, is crazy. So, you know, the, the other thing is, we were called also to a meeting, which she acknowledged, and Mr. Long made it, made it very clear also that, you know, she did ask, "Is there anything that we can do, you know, anything that I can do?" And, you know, we voiced some concerns, which she said was true. But in that meeting also, when we said, "We really, you know, we really just don't care for it," or, "No, there's really nothing, you know, at this point," she proceeded to tell us that she was a land developer, and that she would be forced, if we didn't go for this, that she would be forced to look at, I forget her exact words, but look at other options for development, for commercial development, I believe is what she said. So, which I think is pretty bold, because that's really, that's really you guys' call there, and not, not something we can make. But, but again, just, you know, just to kind of, some things, we really are, the neighbors are concerned. Again, we've had over 100 people sign a petition that, from the area. It's not a close-knit, it's fairly wide out, so to get 100 people on a petition is huge. But that was presented at the first planning commission meeting. Also, one additional thing, I don't wanna speak out of turn here, so somebody definitely correct me if I'm wrong. I'm a little disappointed in Trey Gooch, I have to say. I personally have tried to get in touch with him, I think, three times. I've emailed him, I believe, a couple of times, and tried to call a time or two. I don't know of anybody, of all the neighbors that I've talked to, who has been able to reach him in months, or that he has returned the call. Could be wrong. Trey, I stand, if I, you know, if I'm wrong in that, please, please let me know, but I believe that's the case, from what I hear from all the neighbors. So, so again, I appreciate your time and listening to us, and just appreciate your considering, but we, we really ask that you reject this, and thank you so much.
Seeing no one, I'm gonna declare the public hearing closed. One more.
Hello, I'm Billy Sullivan. I live at 330 Baltimore Road. And just to go, like they said, it's just not the time and place. And she brought up all the stats of safety and the road safety. Me personally, I pick my daughter up at, ended up at Baltimore Road every day, 2:55 the bus comes. It wasn't a month ago. Bus pulls up. Bus pulls up, car coming over the crest, flies by the bus. Bus driver always has to sit there and wait to make sure no cars are coming. So what's to say? A slower van pulling in, they're going to try to, at Deer Run, they're going to go around it. Because they don't drive 55. It's going Franklin, everybody's trying to get home. They're coming 60, 70 miles an hour all day long. And so that's a big concern for my daughter there. And then just the safety of having her get off the bus right there next to the storage units, which will be backed up, right up in that area. And I just don't care for that. I don't want her getting off there later on. I'd love for her to be able to walk home when she gets older, but I still wouldn't feel safe with that being right there. And like, I just don't think it's the time and place. Later on, eventually, it will happen, and we all know that. But right now, we're just a small, everybody's got small plots of land, and that's just how we want to keep it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Now I'll declare the public. Anyone else? Come up.
Hi, my name's Clyde Round from Holson Steel Engineering. I just want to address a few of the concerns that the neighbors have expressed, and kind of walk you through a little bit of the process. Because it's been, it's been a challenge. I appreciate the neighbors' input and their passion for their particular neighborhood. But at the same time, I think there's some really critical issues that I think have to be addressed. And, and really, it's bigger picture stuff. You know, Murfreesboro is growing. 96 is a corridor that's been identified as a growth corridor. That road will be expanded eventually. It's a heavily traveled road now. It has a very much of a commercial kind of feel as it begins to develop closer to veterans. And so Mrs. DeLonge, in her process of finding a place in Murfreesboro that she felt was appropriate for her type of business, she did her research. She found those sized properties she needed to have. She found a location on a corridor that's been identified that have the traffic count, the future growth in terms of residential that would accommodate a self-storage unit. So I don't think we can fault developers in this town for finding property that they want to see developed. The second part is that she did talk to the neighbors and adjacent, because any good business decision means you're going to go and ask people around that and say, "Do you have any opposition to potentially this type of application on this property?" She was given the green light by the neighborhood. And then we know in our, in our planning process, you know, the best way to stop something from happening that you don't want to happen is you buy it yourself. You don't sell it. When you sell your property to a potential developer, they're going to develop the property. So I have a little bit of a challenge with that, that, that the same people that have bought, sold the property now, they want it developed. And yes, they want some homes on it, but they really don't want homes on it either. Because the homes have the same issue that potentially storage has. If there's 42 cars a day, it's just that much more of a risk over 21 cars a day. But as far as the process is concerned, this is where I'm more passionate. Because safety wasn't the issue initially. Initially, it was storage. So we talked about storage with the neighbors. We met on storage with the neighbors. We began to make concessions with the neighbors. We took it from a nine-acre development to a five-acre development. We gave up four acres next to Chris's property, just because we thought that was the right thing to do. They didn't want the development to be bisected by Baltimore Road. We stayed on the eastern side of Baltimore Road. So that was concession number one. Concession number two, and these are plans. This is Mrs. DeLonge paying for plans to be redeveloped in response to the neighbors' concerns. Plan number two, we had access points on Baltimore Road and on Deer Run. The neighbors didn't want any access off of 96. So we, we said, "That's fine." They said, "Could you, they said, "Would you mind changing the access point to 96 versus having it go into our neighborhood?" Mrs. DeLonge chose to pull those access points off of both Baltimore Road and Deer Run Road. So we feel like concession number two was made. Then the neighbors asked for a certain style. I mean, Mrs. Long volunteered. They didn't want any cameras to be seen, you know, no sort of photographing of their, their private lives. They didn't want any light intrusion. We changed the plan again to create barricade-style type of storage. All the neighbors would see would be a vegetative buffer, a type-two buffer, with the side of a masonry building, as if it was a wall around an estate. That's the impact on some of their passing through the property that Mrs. DeLonge would like to develop. So my question is, if she did her due diligence, met with the neighbors, honestly got their opinion, found a piece of property that could work on a corridor that's identified as an urban growth corridor, what is a developer to do? And then when you meet with the neighbors consistently to try to make the plan palatable to them, and they give you direction on how to shape the plan, not issues of safety, how to shape the plan. You feel like you're making accommodations, you're making headway, and typically, that works. But then when we come to the last meeting, the reason we were prepared is because we thought we had the green light. We thought we had heard the neighbors. We thought we had met their needs. And we felt like we were honestly in relationship with them to get this thing done. And then all of a sudden, it's all about traffic. It's all about concerns with safety. We go back out there, do a safety study, a traffic study, a visual study, provide documentation, and now the road is still as dangerous as it's ever been. Now, my question is, it's not Mrs. DeLonge's problem that Deer Run is not a safe access point. It's not Mrs. DeLonge's problem that Baltimore Road is not a safe access point. That has its own nature. What Mr. Long is proposing is a wide access into a mini-storage unit that has maximum 21 cars a day on a very safe portion of the road. Whether people run high on 96 and they run, you know, they're just going crazy, that can happen on any road in Murfreesboro. That argument would happen anywhere. If people drive recklessly, they drive recklessly. But I don't think we should fault Mrs. DeLonge for trying to fulfill the dream that she has to have a development, doing her due diligence, meeting with the neighbors multiple times, adjusting the plan, multiple times, and then have an issue that wasn't brought up on the, on the initial process, and have that become the major issue. And she's already proven that that is not an issue. Perception's one thing, reality's another thing. And so the fact of the matter is, I'm asking for you to approve this process on the bigger picture. Because what we're saying is, 96 is identified. It will grow. They say it's not now. Let's not do it now. It's just not the right time. Trust me, it'll never be the right time, based on the logic that's being presented. It'll never be the right time, because they would like it to stay the way it is. And I understand that, and I can respect that. But the fact of the matter, that wasn't the issue that was brought up initially. We've done our best to respond to their concerns. And, and as a result, we're asking you to think on the big picture in terms of where we're going as a county, and try to understand her perspective, their perspective, and make the best decision. And I'm available after the public hearing for any kind of more detailed questions. Thank you.
My name is Frank Russell. I live at 1112 Deer Run Road. Wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I just feel compelled to say something. I've had the opportunity to be the homeowners association president for 13 years there. For those of us that have lived in that area, by the way, her proposal, what you gave tonight, the presentation tonight, was very thorough, very impressive. And, but what it didn't, what it didn't include in that is this formula. Those of us that have lived there for so long, when we come up to Highway 96, we look to the west, there's a dip in the road that's been mentioned a number of times. There's those two hills. And we know to sit and wait, sit and wait, be patient. Sometimes you sit there for a good while, and you make sure it's clear, and then you pull out. It has nothing to do with cameras or the vegetation or any of that, okay? I think it's a great spot for many storage. I think it's a great location. It is absolutely the wrong time. It's going to be a disaster. It's just a disaster waiting to happen. Because the folks that are going to be coming out there are not familiar with the area like we are. Because those of us that live there know, we just have to sit and wait until it's clear, and then you go. If someone's driving a vehicle they're not familiar with, a 20, 20-foot box truck they're going to move, they have no idea that there's a hiding spot down there in those low dips. They're going to pull out. The gentlemen that drive the buses, they know to sit and wait and come out. The people that are going to be driving these vans, moving vans, they have no idea what's waiting in those dips. And it's very, very dangerous. For me, it's totally safety. It's a safety issue. Great location. I'm a real estate investor. If she would like to sell the property as a real estate, as a residential purpose, I'd be willing to talk to her about that. It's a great spot. But it is absolutely going to be a problem for safety. Had a couple of things I was going to say, and I can't remember them, so, but thank you for your time.
Thank you all for listening to our comments. I know that they can be lengthy. My name is Jennifer Sullivan. I live at 330 Baltimore Road. Ms. DeLonge, and your associate here with you tonight, did mention something that reality versus perception is a big factor. The reality is that Ms. DeLonge knocked on my door, and I answered the door, and I said that I was against it. She invited us down to her home. We came into her home. As a neighborhood group, we just said we were against it. So that's reality and perception, and I feel like that's been misrepresented tonight. Statistics are powerful. She came prepared with a PowerPoint, beautiful presentation. But as a group here, if, I guess, statistics and reality, if you're against this, if you would stand as a neighborhood so that we can have a visual of how passionate our neighborhood is about not having this development. It's a Monday night, difficult for folks to get out of their homes, out of their work schedules, to be here and make a voice. And it's, this is our third visit. I mean, it's tiring, as a matter of fact. And so as our third visit, and we continue to bring forth a presence on a weeknight for you guys, this is, this is sacrifice to be here. And it's just not something that we're really interested in. And I feel like that the presentation and the voice is misrepresented. And I don't like things being spoken for me either, so, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, this is a hard one. And it's hard because there's just such a gray area here. There's, there's not a lot of black and white, the way I see it. And the reason there's a lot of gray area is because there's a lot of emotion. I'm not sure they would be happy with anything out there. They would like to just see it raw land, is what I have come to the conclusion. From a planning standpoint, the storage unit makes perfect sense. It is the most lowest impact of any type of planning development that could be placed on a site. Half the traffic count and a small handful of houses would be. So from a traffic argument, I don't understand why they're against it. I get the point that they're bigger trucks, but there's just so seldom or few of a daily count. So I've got to remove the emotional aspect of the neighbors. And I've really got to think of this as a pure planning standpoint. That being said, I think the plan makes sense. I think the location makes sense. And I am going to make a motion to approve. A subject to staff comments. And if, and Doug, your staff comments have not really changed. Other, if I recall, you're in agreement with, you had some concerns with the egress and ingress, right? And she's already talked about opening the width, I guess, of the entry, right?
Well, yes.
Your main concern?
Well, our biggest concern, of course, was, I mean, we had several, but our biggest concern was the access to the property. Of course, originally, it was on Baltimore Road. We didn't particularly think that was a good option. They switched at Deer Run, which was better in one sense, but at the same time, wasn't. After the third time, I guess, being the charm in that sense. Them widening it out a little bit, I think that may have been new between what happened in July and tonight. But that's, I mean, that doesn't change my opinion one way or the other, as far as that goes. I think the access where they're proposing it now makes the most sense.
Yes, Chairman Phillips, the motion would be to approve, subject to staff comments.
I have a motion to approve. And a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, item number 16-A009, please say aye. Any opposition? Call roll, please, Gal.
Jim Aberwater? Lee Bogle? Mike Kush? Chip Pinion? Charlotte P.? Jeff Phillips?
Aye.
Four and two against.
Motion carries. There will also be a public hearing and a final decision made on this rezoning request before the county commission in this room on November the 17th at 6:00 p.m. Other business, Doug?
Just a couple of items, just to bring your attention. One of them being the email I sent out regarding the Power of Ten Summit, which will be coming up here within the next month. It's a little different format this year, different timeframe, and there is a cost associated with it. I've been given the okay by Mayor Burgess to cover the costs of any of the planning commissioners who would like to go to that. So if you would let me know if you'd like to attend by the end of the week. You may have gotten an email regarding the Early Bird special ending today. I believe that's, just looking at that, that's just for the private sector folks that might be coming. The public sector folks, they have a lower rate than even the Early Bird. It doesn't expire beyond today, so it's, it's still going to be a $50 fee. So if any of you from the planning commissioner are interested in going, just let me know, and I'll be happy to get that signed up for you. The other issue is just regarding another training opportunity we have coming up. We talked about it this, just briefly, at our last planning commission meeting. We're going to do another 7:30 meeting before our 9 o'clock meeting on the 24th. It's going to be a presentation that I heard at the most recent Tennessee APA conference from Brett Smith, from Reagan Smith and Associates. He was very instrumental in helping us redraft our subdivision regulations. So he's very familiar with, with our processes and everything. But he's going to kind of go through the development process, looking at it from the private side, you know, the developer side. It was a very interesting presentation of all the different things that they consider, and I think you'll find it interesting as well. So again, that'll be at 7:30, prior to our 9 o'clock meeting on the 24th in the Planning Maze. That's all I had.
Anyone else? Our next meeting is scheduled for October 24th, 9:00 a.m. At the, in the Planning Maze. We'll have a training session that will start at 7:30 before that meeting on the 24th. Thank you for your attendance. We're adjourned.